Oh, it's red now.
Well, red is record.
Oh, red is before.
Yeah, I just, I did, now I'm just doing it right to, straight to the card. I think it was recording to the card. I just want to say, don't deal with YouTube. It's going right to the card.
We're making no promises here.
I'm hoping this.
Who's next?
I didn't want to lose everything.
My name is Denise Steiko. I've lived in the village for forty-seven years. I did not, was not able to attend the show until last night because it was too hot, but I watched it on YouTube and I liked the sign. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what all the excitement is about actually. It seems such derision about it and I don't think it deserves that. And I'm not hearing what the alternative is to that. So unless you have an alternative, it's very hard to say what, what you want. One of the purposes of a sign is to communicate and it would be really nice to be able to put up messages. I mean, I can't even imagine somebody going up there filling in little black letters on a white, it's just, anyway, so I just wanted to establish that I have no problems with the sign and I kind of liked it. And I trust our village to do things that people consider tacky and a non-tacky thing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next. Mark Thorpe, all right.
Hi, Brian Hicks, village resident. To address one of the things that was said tonight, the sight distance for this sign, where some people may have an issue and, oh, it's safety for Washington, it's not going to project that far.
For Washington Avenue.
Right, it's not going to project to Washington. You could have asked it last night, they didn't think probably, so I just want to make sure that that point is brought forward. And also the fact that at night it dims down, which we did demonstrate last night, but some people had to leave early, didn't get a chance to see that. That's very important. I also heard them say that they could turn it off at night. Like Matthew has said, we are willing to work with everyone in the village. If we weren't, we wouldn't have had the demonstration last night. I think it shows the willingness of the fire department to work with the community. It's a beautiful community. We don't want to destroy it. We're here. We are the community. So for people who say, no, it's going to be a distraction, oh, it's terrible, a majority of the traffic will probably come down the side street anyway from school during the school year and people that are Maronians will see it, but I think it's a positive thing.
Are you a yes or no?
Yes.
Next.
Good evening. Andy Seferi, village resident. I've been a resident of this village my entire life. Been a member of the fire department for fifty years. Served on the village board for fifteen years and I was mayor for three years. I'm in favor of this sign because the village board has the responsibility to do what's best for the community. Village community. Also, I'm sure you're going to address the issue about why this village can put the sign there and other places can't. Going back in all the years in this community, I've seen things added and taken away. I read the C, what is it, CAC letter that you got. So if they're opposing this sign, why don't we take down Marona's sign? Why don't we take down the signs that are lit outside of the building? Why don't we do away with the streetlights because they cost taxpayers money? Why don't we do a lot of things that are in that letter and eliminate them? They say it's going to be an environmental impact. What about the electric cars that they may have? How much of an impact does that have when they have to just get rid of the batteries? A lot of people look at something and see what they don't want, but other people see what they have and they don't like. So everybody has their own opinion, but I don't see an environmental impact on the village. I don't see an extra cost to the village because that sign is lit anyway. That was there originally. Probably costs more to light that sign than it does for the new sign. So I'm just here to let you know that I am in favor of this sign.
Okay.
And I support the fire department.
Thank you.
Howard Schuman, town of Washington resident. I've lived here for fifty-four, fifty-five years since nineteen sixty-eight, so I guess I'm older than most people. And we are, little known fact unless it's changed, the CAC, which I'm a member of, is also the village CAC. At least last time I checked on the website, a few years ago we were. So that's just a little background. I am going to speak not so much about what other people have spoken before. I was also one of the town comprehensive plan committee, the village water committee and so on. I don't quite have Andy's background, but I've been around and everybody appreciates the fire department that I know. This is not about the fire department that I'm going to speak about. I'm going to speak about what is the balance between what a person wants or an organization wants and what's good for the entire town in terms of the longer, bigger picture. And the bigger picture has always been for the town of Washington, Washington and the village of Millbrook, that we have a special ambience and appeal. We look a certain way. It attracts people here to come and visit and it attracts people to buy property here, pay property taxes. It's part of the look and feel that I'm going to talk about and what's going to happen in the future. I think the most important thing, the one business the town and the village have that brings in money and tourists and everything else is the way everything looks. And I don't feel that this fits into that particular category. I feel that the existing sign fit in very well. It served its purpose. I don't see why we can't get another sign that is similar to that. I understand it has to be done manually, but a lot of signs are done manually. So I'm more concerned that the way things are going to look and how it's going to affect things going forward. I've also been around long enough to see that once you start going down a certain road, it's very difficult to come back from it later. This could be used as precedent setting for other signs. In the future, you'll have a harder time denying them. And I, I just don't think it's in the best interest of the town over a small amount of effort to put letters on a sign to risk the much bigger picture of setting some precedents going forward that are going to put in place some changes that people may not like when they really happen. So it's nothing really to do directly with the fire departments. It's to do with what's really the best decision for going forward for both the town and the village and to try to keep what we have, which most places have lost by the way.
Okay, good.
Okay, so those are, those are my points.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
My name is Kevin McRae, I'm a village resident, the ex-president of the NDA. I was part of the group that wrote the sign code for the village. It took us two and a half years to write it. We felt we were very careful doing it. But in exclusion, where government signs would be excluded, meaning federal, state and local governments. I do not think that a group of volunteers who provide a service to the town and the village are a government agency. They do not write laws, which is what a government does. They can write a ban or they can impose a ban, but they do not write laws. And my second point is, I've many, but many people have discussed them, most of what is being proposed to be put on this sign can be done with social media. Social media, they know how to do it because last night they immediately posted on Instagram, but they don't do it the way that they could. They complained that they didn't have any kind of attendance to their block party. They didn't put anything on social media till the day of the block party. Perhaps had they done their social media, which is really how you would get the word out today for most people, whether it's Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, there are so many different ways that you can get this information out. The village has, I think you call it Blackboard, where people can sign up. For, for someone to say if there's an accident on forty-four, you need to drive to the firehouse to know that the road's closed, I can get that on WAVE. I know everybody doesn't have WAVE. I know everybody doesn't have a cell phone, but if you're going to get a weather emergency, you're going to get it on your TV, on your radio. There are so many other places to get this information before you have to come to the firehouse to find out that we have a storm coming.
Okay, thank you.
In many areas.
Not everybody.
And I would also like to add, I agree, people support the fire department. We just opposed the sign. I thought last night was very aggressive and it was so sad that it was us versus them and it was so obvious. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I think we should just clarify for everyone that, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not saying the fire department is a governmental entity. The fire house is a village owned and that's why it's within our remit to.
Well, let's take it offline because my train says that the fire department is direct line report to the board of trustees.
Yeah, that's correct. The fire department is a, is a division or subdivision of the village itself, just like the police department. So it isn't a government entity. In towns, it's a little bit different. You have a separate fire district.
So, so we will respond, that's the second time someone's brought that, that issue up and we will respond in detail with what, I talked to Bear and talked to Nikon, what Ian has said as well, because it's an issue we need to get, to clarify. Okay, next please. Yes, come on.
Hi.
Hi.
I am Elizabeth Logan Barabale. I have been here for decades, always showing up. I attended yesterday's meeting. I already spoke about it. I was a little disappointed in how it went. But in the aftermath of that, I thought about this, we have a brand new signage company and I listened to the representative from the signage company that said that in one instance he put up a sign and they got three volunteers. And he said that he comes from a similarly sized community. It's Connecticut. And that they had adapted it to work well. Obviously not seeing any evidence of this. Kind of curious about this. So I went down the rabbit hole and was wondering why so many of the firehouses around here have these signs because I was thinking, what really is the purpose of them? I respect that when somebody as significant as George Anderson dies, that people want to honor him. And I saw that in the reasoning, but I, I understand the need for volunteers and especially youthful volunteers for obvious reasons. But it just doesn't seem to make sense that this is the route to go. These are twenty-five thousand plus at top. They seem to be going to every community and yet the fire departments all seem to consistently be struggling with finding volunteers and so forth. And I then heard the argument last night that not, and somebody just voiced it back there, that not everybody's on social media and not everybody has a cell phone. So I looked that up and according to Deloitte, I think it's ninety-two percent of Americans do. And I can pull it up. I think it's eighteen to twenty-four, something like ninety-five percent are utilizing social media. So I was thinking, do we need to have this sign? Is this not an incentive that the signage companies are pushing? And would we not be better like doing what Kevin has said is using social media and the website and went on the website and looked. You know, there's one batch of photos from twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty, which I understand nobody has time to update this, but maybe that would be the emphasis. So then I called the fire department in California that has a like and said, do you have one of these signs? And I said, no, why would we have it? I said, well, you know, if to drive interest in the department, perhaps to advertise. And I said, if we, if we do pancake breakfasts or, or things of the sort, we put on our social media, we put on our website and we talk to our community members. I said, we just don't understand the point of this. And I said.
Okay, so that's your first point, so you're against the sign, I didn't hear it, right?
I'm, I'm, I just sort of wonder the per, it's not that I'm anti this, I just don't understand the purpose. I think maybe we take the sign that's there, move it up to the library, put in posters of the community. And then I just don't, you know.
Okay, so you don't understand the purpose and you recommend using social media instead?
Well, social media in combination with the website and perhaps materials, a better outreach of the community through modern forms.
Okay, fine. All right, thank you. Next. Mark, come on up there.
I'm Karen Granger. I'm obviously a member of the department. I lived in the town of Washington all of my life, so since nineteen seventy. I just want to clarify a couple of things. We do have a website. We've been trying to work on it. We are full-time employees elsewhere, as Mr. Herson knows. I'm a teacher during the day in another district. I have a daughter. I am the secretary here. I am the vice president here. I am a firefighter here. I've been on the board of directors here in my twenty-one years. We do the best that we can, but this is volunteer. I come to three meetings a month here. For every Tuesday I am here, I'm only going to speak about myself. I only, I come every Tuesday for truck checks, so I'm here for a couple of hours for that. I come to every mandatory class we have. I do try to do our social media posts. I am the person responsible. We are on the Facebook. They shut down our page because they said we violated community standards. We couldn't get an answer what we violated. We had posted an update from Central Hudson on power outages. We don't know why it got taken down unless somebody reported it, but they didn't tell us that. It took us six months to be able to get a page. Recreate it because you can't talk to anybody on Facebook. Nobody responds to you. So we are doing the best that we can with social media. We have full-time jobs in our own families. I will come to your house if there is a fire. I don't care if you're for the sign or not. If there's a fire, I spent Thanksgiving at somebody's house out of fire for ten hours. That's what we're here for. This is one piece that makes what we do just a little bit easier. Social media, when we do put things, people say, I didn't see it. One of our own members asked me last night where the post was about the sign that I had put because even though he had reset, it didn't show up. You, nobody can control how Facebook posts things. I don't have time and I'll be honest, unless one of, I will give an application. If anybody wants to be our social media director, we will swear you in as a member, we will vote you in because we will take any volunteer we can get. I don't have time to do TikTok, Instagram, Facebook, a missing one, Snapchat. I don't use Snapchat. Because I also do this for my job. I'm a teacher again that sits up at my building. We can't do it all. We will gladly give anybody that would like an application tonight, one, just see me after the meeting. And I will give you an application. Joy, do you want to be our social media person? I'll show you how to do it. We'll swear you in. It takes two meetings to do it.
Can you send all your staff to the village so the village can, which has a very good website and the town has a good website? They have much more about, you're wanting the sign up, I read them both, than, than you do. I mean.
Because it's a village-owned building, so we have shared, actually, we wrote the letter that they shared.
Well, I think, I think you do communicate with people a lot, right?
Yeah, I don't need any more work. I don't need any more work.
No, 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 you already, my point is you already do it. Right?
So the point is, yeah, we do best that we can to get the information out, but we, the block party was saying, we had posted it. Members had shared it. People still said, even though it was set up, that they didn't know what it was going on.
It was posted for two and a half months before on our Facebook page.
So not everybody uses Facebook and Instagram, so that's.
I don't use either, but I do look at the village website so I know what's going on.
And they know when we're having an event, they have that information. Our website is, it's very difficult. It's a Google website. It's not the easiest thing to do. But I would welcome someone to come in and help out. We need volunteers. Here's your chance. I'll get you applications. Just see me after the meeting.
All right, Karen, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next.
Joe. Hello, Joe Cortez. I'm fourth generation Millbrook resident, live in the village. I kind of, I see a lot of signs. I do a lot of travel in my work and I do a lot of municipal work and I see a lot backlit signs. I see a lot of, I'm a lighting specialist, believe it or not. I see a lot of signs that had the floodlights and all these fancy LED lights and you see them blinking and everything. I think the stupidest thing for them to do is put a sign up like you have now and have ground lit sign, lights, bright as ever, like everybody else. You come into the village, you see the sign said, welcome to Millbrook. You can't read the sign because it's so bright. You have no control. This sign has control.
So you're a yes?
Yes, I'm definitely for it.
Thanks.
The, the fire department is gonna, they're going to regulate how the sign's being used. You don't even notice that sign. I actually drove by last night and forgot to come and see it and I didn't even see it lit up or anything. And that was coming through the Millbrook. In the morning I'd come through, sometimes I'd swing by here and you don't even notice the sign. I, I don't have a problem with it. I do have a problem with some other municipality firehouse. They have these big TV screens and, you know, they have all the kids. It was great. I was in Unionville last couple of weeks ago and I saw the valedictorian of Millbrook High School on the full spread. I don't think you plan on doing something like that. So, you know, it's a different type of sign. This is a controlled sign. And that's the way modern things are, you know?
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Next. If you're here, you need to come, I can give you two cents for it.
Please don't be shy if you want to hear from anyone.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Fettigan, village resident and businessman. For the last thirty-six years I have observed our fire department. Seems like they spend most of their time either protecting us, training protectors, or cleaning up from protectors. But the sign is important to them. It's their burden-winded love. I think we should be looking to clear up the sign.
Thank you.
I'm going to read an email from Bob Audia that you wanted to read.
Oh, okay.
This is from Bob Audia, town councilman, but also village resident, more importantly. My wife and I fully support the message the board presented to us at Tuesday night's viewing of the Millbrook Fire Department. We believe it is a wonderful thing for all the taxpayers in the town and village to have current information on any subject in a modern, up-to-date presentation and a location in front of our firehouse. It's especially fortunate that this comes at no cost to the taxpayers and will have no impact on any residential entity at its location. It is evident that this information board is for everyone's benefit and not a business advertising mechanism. This message board is sponsored and paid for by the volunteers that risked their lives to save ours. I hope everyone, well, I hope anyone who views the message board and is against it thinks long and hard about going against the wishes of the volunteer fire departments, firefighters, who give so much of their lives for the people of this village and town. Thank you for your time, Bob and Sharon Audia.
Okay, thanks. Next. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Okay, that ends the public comments period. Any comments via the trustees we're going to make because of this war? We need to make a decision. We need to have a vote. I want to do it next month when Buffy's here. By the way, is everyone going to be here next month? All the trustees?
I'm going to be here.
Okay, I got thrown a curveball last month, so I will confront with Buffy, make sure we're all here to do this.
So they're waiting until next month while we call the session meeting?
Well, because I'm going to have my shoulder surgery next Wednesday, so I don't know how long it'll be out. Let me, let me see how that goes. I made my wheelchair cocked on next week, so let me see how that goes on the side end.
I may not, I may not be here before Wednesday at five, okay?
But, you know, we waited five and a half years. I don't see why we're waiting another month or two because of that. And I do want to get that DOU together, agree with you and get the board's approval as well. Yes, Andy?
If you have a forum here to speak, why can't you vote tonight?
Because I'm not completing the DOU with the fire department. I want the concurrence on this DOU and I want the board to also agree with you.
Right. As a village resident, I'm asking the village board to put this on the referendum and let the village residents vote on this instead of the board voting on it.
I don't agree with that. So there's a process we follow, you probably know better than I do, to get a referendum, put it on the ballot. And you need to go through that process. Something like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's like a certain percent of the occupation has the sign petition and that's the one who prefers the ballot based on that.
Why didn't you vote on it?
Because I told you, because we haven't got the agreement with the fire department, the DOU, and I want the board's concurrence on this as well. This is too important, as you can see through all the feedback, for us to do this without the board's participation. All right, any other comments?
I would just like to encourage anyone who doesn't feel comfortable making a public statement, if you have feelings about this, please email not only myself, but any other board members you feel comfortable conversing with and give us your opinion. This is supposed to be a representative democracy. This is obviously a very controversial issue and I'm not going to vote based on polls, but I also want input from people to let you know how they feel. And I think that's, that's only proper. That's supposed to be my job and the job of the trustees we're here. So, you know, find some way to let us know exactly how you feel or we'll try to act accordingly.
Can we shut the AC? Which way do I have to go here? Is it really hot? Okay, thanks, Mike, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's basically it.
All right, any other comments? Okay, yes. Oh, Brian, come on up.
I respect everybody's opinion. I think everybody should have an opinion. But I also think that it's respectful that everybody who gives their opinion should be seen, all right? So if someone wants to write you, that's fine, but I really think it should be posted on your website or in your minutes or something where we can see what our counterparts feel. It's not, it's not a list. It's not, it's just, we came up here and spoke. Everybody sees us. Everybody knows who we are. In America, you see who talks.
Yeah, let me think about that. I don't know that I've received any of the emails that said, you know, don't publicize this. I have some that said, please read the convene. I opted not to do that because I think as you just said, you should be here.
Well, but you know what? I, I don't have a problem with that because they signed it. You know who it's from.
Well, I may have a problem. Let me think about that. I'm not, I'm not.
I think, I think those records are probably foilable.
Yes.
You can request them. Go ahead and request them, Brian. Any emails sent to the board, you can request.
All right.
Whether they're shared or not, those are public records.
You know, and, and do your emails say town or, town or village?
No. And I'm not a good one to tell the difference.
That's an, that to me is an issue.
Okay, but it's an unknown. It's a valid concern, even outside the town.
Right.
You know, I don't know.
Without, without starting a debate on, on both of those issues, my feeling is, A, not everyone is comfortable speaking nor should they have to identify themselves and be able to have an opinion. Okay, that's the first thing.
Open government, Mike.
Yes, exactly.
If you're making a statement to the government, whether it be in a letter or in person, like he says, it's foiled.
Fine, well, they will, don't want to send me an email because they're afraid they're going to get spoiled and they won't send the email. But not everyone's comfortable standing as you are now in doing this.
No, and that's fine. And I understand that. I respect that. It's just if you're gonna, if you're gonna take the time to sit down and write a letter or write an email, you should be willing to say, this is my opinion, just like everyone here.
That's fine.
On the other hand, I don't want to shut shut a person's opinion because, right?
That's not the point.
Because we're friends speaking in public.
That's not the point.
All right, if there's another sign, then?
Yes, that's not the point. The point is just openness.
Yes, I like that.
I have a bold disrespect. I think, you know, the openness should be for us. I understand what you're saying about.
But if we don't know how you come up with your, your formula, it's, it's like saying, here's the answer without some.
I think you'll hear each of our, you know, thought processes and how we arrived at our conclusion. I think preserving some privacy for the folks that want to communicate with us, who ask for that privacy, I think it's only fair.
I don't agree at all. It's, it's open.
Okay, look, your point is made. I understand that.
The other point that I think has to be addressed is let's keep in mind that whether you're a village resident.
you're a village resident or a town resident, close to eighty percent of the bill that gets paid for the EMS services...
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent for the EMS services and for the fire department gets paid by through town contributions to our collection. So anyone who lives in the town has an equal say in terms of making decisions about financially what happens with the fire department, and they have a right to.
Well, not really, not financially.
Yes, they do financially.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Let me speak. What you're saying is, true, they pay taxes. There isn't one apparatus here that the village or the town has paid fully for. The volunteers of this company have contributed to every single vehicle, every piece of equipment down there. It doesn't involve company.
Okay, look.
And the other thing is, one last thing and I'll stop.
Okay.
It's not one dime out of the taxpayers.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, they contribute to it.
Okay, Joe, you have a final comment?
Yeah.
Come on up.
I've been on the planning board.
I want you to be here so you cannot be recorded.
Yeah, I've been on the planning board eighteen years, maybe fifteen, eighteen. I've lost count. I don't know. When we have requests or people send letters to the planning board, we make sure that, especially in a public hearing, that everybody is aware of that and it brought out, and we sit down and read them. I know you might have five or ten, twenty, but if we had fifteen in the old days, we read every one of them. And there's no reason why we're in a public hearing and we shouldn't hear that. That's considered a public hearing. As a returning here...
So first off...
What's your opinion?
Joe, it's not a public hearing. It's a public comment session. There's a difference.
Okay.
Public hearing is different.
So maybe we should have a public hearing instead?
Is that what you want? I don't know.
I don't know, but I think we should.
All right, well, this is a public comment session, not a public hearing.
Yeah. So, but I still think we should all, are you guys agreeing? Should we hear what everybody else is saying? It might, eighty percent of them might be negative and twenty, or vice versa. We should all hear them all.
Yeah.
Peter Doro came up here and read some email him. What's the right of us not hearing what you were saying? See what I did there?
Yeah.
So I think...
I just don't feel comfortable because I don't feel like...
I also think you should vote. You only have four members. You've got a forum. You should legally vote pending outcome of...
So I don't do a pending vote. A pending vote means what? We agree and then we'll take it back next month? No. As I said, we're gonna put the DOU together and the board agreed to it.
Well, don't hold off another month. I think you should try to get it earlier.
I told you the reason why I don't...
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. All right, thanks. Anybody else? No thirds allowed. Okay, fine. All right, if that's all for the public comment, then I wanna move on to the regular meeting, all right?
You're all welcome to stay. You don't have to.
Thank you all for coming. Okay, now, as I said before, we've got no charts, so I need, the department has to just talk through the numbers, which are really exciting. Let's wait for the population to filter out.
You can get them on your phone.
Get it on your phone. Okay, fine.
Does anyone need another copy? Do you have another copy?
Uh, well, I assume you guys have all got your own copy, right? Hang on, let me just find my copy. Did I get a copy?
I gave you a copy. In the packet I gave you.
Yeah, I'll see. All right, hang on. Oh, here it is. Got it. Okay. Of course, I had to have a few in the office. Okay. Ted, go ahead. Yes.
Okay. Total of eighty-seven alarms for July, twenty automatic alarms, fifty-six EMS calls, two carbon monoxide incidents, five auto-vehicle accidents, three wires-down calls, and a single call for a brush fire, which was actually a controlled burn. The NDP career unit went out fifty-seven times. The volunteer ambulance responded ten times, and the membership responded twenty-one times to help at ambulance calls. We went mutually nineteen times for EMS calls last month, and we had mutually come in twice for fire calls and four times for EMS calls.
Nineteen times, that's...
It was a busy month elsewhere, that's for sure.
Any particular area or, I guess I should ask, is it Unionville?
Uh, no.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay.
Not to a significant degree, no.
All right. Any questions about Ted's report? Just so you know, I had a meeting today with Gary Sperry and the landlord and representative of the NDP of their current location in Mavisville. And there's a zoning issue. And the resolution of the meeting was that they are gonna go to the ZVA, ask for a variance to allow us to, because I just said that's where they should go since there's only complaints from neighbors of various kinds, just concerned with the traffic. And I said the best way to resolve is to go to a ZVA, which will be a public hearing, in which they can then work out all the issues and see if they come to compromise for staying there. Alternatively, someone is working on possible available properties in the village that they will, if it comes to fruition, will be provided to NDP as an alternative over what they currently say. All right. For the time being, evidently they've got a, something in a deceased, what do you call it? Something in...
Cease and desist?
Cease and desist, right. Order which, by going to the ZVA, stops that, that they can stay there for, until that's resolved.
Pending the resolution.
Tending to the resolution, right. Just so you know, that's what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Matt, anything you wanna report?
I just wanna let the board know that the roof is done.
Looks good.
It does look good.
Nice color choice.
Getting a lot of praise from the residents and everybody that drives by.
All right, very good. Nicely done. All right, great. All right, Officer Witt called me as I was here, saying he's thrown up a couple of times this afternoon, and so I said, "Please, you're not coming to the meeting." So the report is included. If you want to answer the report, any issues or questions you have, you can relay back to Officer Witt. I'm asking trustees. He also has a report for a active shooter training plan, which he was gonna present as well this month. Obviously, that's been pushed out a month. He's identified specifics that he wants his officers to go through as far as training and some additional equipment that he wants to purchase. Rifles and a shotgun, or vice versa, something like that. He's gonna bring that to the meeting next month. There's no questions with that, but let's move on to the highway, Bob.
Okay. Summer brush pickup is ended on Monday. The next one will be the second Monday in September, and after that will be leaf pickup.
Sorry.
It's never ending.
So you're saying October is starting a leaf pickup?
Yes, October 1st is the beginning of leaf pickup.
Wow, okay.
Leaf pickup, not grass pickup, not dirt pickup, leaf pickup.
All right.
We picked up everything yesterday, on Tuesday, so anything that goes out, we'll have to wait now until September 12th. We repaired two catch basins, trimmed tree branches and vines that were blocking signs. We shimmed nine partners in Linden Lane with blacktop in preparation for the oil and stone application. Trimmed back bushes on nine partners in Linden in preparation for the oil and stone operation. We had a street cleaner come in to sweep those two streets again in prep. And then finally, we oil and stoned nine partners in Linden Lane. We also assisted the town of Washington in two of their roads that were oil and stoned the day before and the day after we did ours. So it was very cost-effective. The company only had to come in once and set up once, and we assisted them. And then, of course, they assisted us with the use of their trucks and also manpower.
So they also used pecking?
Yes. Yeah, all three streets were done, basically Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And it worked out.
No, I'm saying the town uses pecking as well.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's why I said the setup was much, it was much cheaper because they didn't have to come out and pull equipment in. I don't know. I asked the trustees to take a look at the road and if they had any questions as to how or what oil and stoning is. It is a seal of the road with oil, and then stone is laid down right after that, and that will help preserve the road, and needs to be done on just about any road that's in good shape, to keep it in good shape. Weed killed and trimmed the tennis courts, cleared storm damage. We had two trees come down, one that blocked, completely blocked Haight Avenue, and one that blocked half of Anson Avenue. We were called out in the middle of the night. We removed, pushed those off the road, and then the next morning, cut them up and removed them. I wanna thank Mike for putting out some warning so we could find them. They were small, but they were effective.
They tried.
Thank you. We rebuilt the catch basin on Anson Avenue, and we picked up brush from that same storm. We've had these hit-and-miss storms, and that one was considered a small storm that took the two trees down. It only lasted for about ten or fifteen minutes, but it did some damage. And they were, they were trees that were live. One of them was just, just snapped. And that's, that's what I have. If there's any questions on the procedure of the oil stoning, feel free.
What is the, when do you go back and sweep the excess?
The company, the street sweeper's is setting up a date for us now. We usually wait two weeks.
Oh, two weeks?
Yeah, because you don't wanna disturb, you know, especially it's been hot and the oil, you know, could be a little, little soft, but they'll be coming in with their street sweeper and...
So they don't push it to the shoulder, they actually scoop it up?
Oh, yeah, they suck it right up, just like when they do, they do anything else. And then, then the town of Washington will follow them, and their machine will dump into a dump truck. And some of it will still be usable for certain things.
All right. So any questions for Bob?
What's the tentative date for paving?
September 19th. September 19th will be milling, and on the 20th, paving North Avenue. There's some work. The VRI is doing some work on it, and we have some other private work that's gonna be done. So it actually will, the timing will work out well.
Scott, you'll talk about the recently valves on North Avenue? So how many valves do you have?
Three.
Three? And so you're gonna dig up the road and replace it?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have to shut the road down to do that, or?
Yep.
You will?
You will.
Okay. For how long?
As long as it takes.
Is it a day, a week?
No more than a day.
No more than a day?
Yeah.
All right, so you'll get noticed to the board?
Already done.
We already have, okay, good.
It's posted.
Blackboard message.
Yeah, it's posted?
I did that before, too.
Okay, good.
We're good.
Yeah, we're good. All right, great. All right, Bob, thanks.
Okay, Bob, just one, I did drive the road on Friday. I guess that would be the second place I messed it up. And you guys did a beautiful job. I didn't see a lot of excess stone on people's...
Well, pecking did a really nice job on all three roads. There wasn't a lot of excess. Whatever, we've been sweeping the ends, because people, you know, spin the tires and throw it out into the street. So we've been going with the blower and blowing it back in to avoid any kind of slipping.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, it's just they get to the end and...
Yeah, okay.
It's just like anything.
Peel out.
They think it's a brand-new road.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
By the way, I forgot to mention Jared's not here, but I said, I think, last month or month before that, you know, Kelly resigned, right, which she took another job. And so we're looking to find another police officer to fill that gap, right? And he's got a person who's actually working with him down in the Highlands who's interested in additional part-time work. Guy's Brooks Lyman, and Jared's bringing the information and the application for us to review. Hopefully, we can make an offer with the guy, because he works with him, he knows him well. He's trained already, and some pretty pretty work thing, but if it's a go, we'll bring that through, request to the board next month, all right? Okay, Scott? Oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions for Bob?
Yeah, sure.
Bob, is it the same procedure that's been done like twenty years, thirty years ago? Oil, just regular oil?
Pretty much. It's just regular oil. They spread it. It comes out of a truck, and behind it runs the stone, which is dumped out of a dump truck into a hopper, and the hopper distributes it across, and then it's rolled with rubber tires.
Did you have anybody from the environmentalists, fanatics that are out there come to you and complain that you're putting oil down on the road?
No, nothing. And I know Joe, Joe didn't either.
But they come and complain about a sign.
What?
They come and complain about a sign, but they don't complain about the oil that's running off into the streams and stuff.
Why is that a...
Well, it shouldn't run.
I'm just saying.
I always liked dirt roads.
Well, I don't care what kind of roads they are. I'm just saying that, see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with him.
That's a, that's a major environmental impact.
No, it's not.
Oil runoff into stream?
No, it doesn't runoff. It's captured right there. Within minutes, it's covered with stone, it captures. It's not going anywhere. It seals.
Not if they're doing it. It's sealed, right.
Yeah. You should go out and look. You probably know what it is.
I know what...
Yeah. Okay. All right, Scott?
All right. I'll start with the water. For the month of July, we produced six million two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six gallons. Average daily flow is two hundred, nine hundred and ninety gallons. Performed all month in maintenance and sampling. I had general control systems come and set up some new alarms on the computer system. So now we just need to hook them up to the alarm panel, which I'll get the process started pretty soon on that. Inspected the installation of a new water line for the golf course on Church Street near Manor Drive. And during that work, located two buried valves on Church Street with the assistance of Willie Murphy. Those valve boxes were raised to grade.
Oh, that's...
One of them happened to be buried under the sidewalk that was there.
Oh, really?
As we've mentioned before, we have valve replacement on North Avenue. I have that scheduled for Tuesday the 16th. And lastly, I just wanted to briefly talk about water use and conservation. As everyone is probably aware, it's been dry for like two months. We've had about four inches of rain in two months. The, we're, I don't wanna alarm anybody because we're doing fine, but to be proactive, I think we should be conscious of what we're using our water for before it gets to be an emergency.
Have we ever put on any kind of a...
Yes.
Restriction?
Yes.
We have?
It's been probably well over a decade.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe closer to fifteen years.
We've actually banned the use of outside water. We've actually had Dornville stop using water. The golf course stopped using water.
Sure. It's been, it's been quite some time.
It's been a while, but we have done it.
So how do you, how do we know when we're getting to a point of concern? I mean...
When I get down to a certain point, you know, there will...
But you show us here what the flow is. I don't, I don't have any idea what the input is there.
Right, well, I don't, we, there's a tank under the building.
Yeah.
All right. So it's twenty, roughly twenty feet deep. Normally, it's about, anywhere it's from, say, fifteen to eighteen feet of water. Now we're down to about eleven to fifteen, roughly speaking. The low water cutoff on the pumps is like five feet. I don't like to get that far. So I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. I don't wanna, you know, we're not gonna need to put out a notice yet, but if this continues for months...
You say months?
Months. Who knows what's gonna...
Is that a quote?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it might be something we wanna, you know, be conscious of. You know, I, just driving around town, you know, I see a lot of people watering lawns.
Yeah.
You can tell green versus brown.
Yeah.
You know?
Actually, you can tell it's crabgrass versus brown.
Right. So I just think it's something...
Well, I guess I need to know from you at one point, I mean, I think earlier, it was a great check.
Of course.
Notice of this effect to start some conservation.
Right, well, you know, we're keeping an eye and I'm not going to put anything out yet.
Okay.
My, my concern with putting it out is people will freak out. You know?
Yeah.
We're not going to run out of water. Right, I won't allow it.
Yeah.
What about something like voluntary, just informational?
We could do that. I mean, that, that would be.
Right, put something in the newsletter to say heads up, here's what's going on.
I don't know when the newsletter comes out next.
It's going to be.
Well, he's got his mayor newsletter after the meeting.
Yeah, so we can.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be next week.
My feeling is like, like Peter said, voluntary. And I don't want to put any major restrictions out, but I mean, heck, I mean, to me, common sense, like, you know, everybody's, if you're not paying attention to whether it's dry, it's hot.
Alright, good.
There's no need to be watching a car using public water. Yeah.
Alright, fine.
Move on to sewer?
Sure.
For the month of July, a total effluent flow of three million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, forty-seven gallons. Average daily flow is one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred gallons. Precipitation, one point nine inches. Performed all maintenance and sampling for the month. Cleaned and removed weeds from sand filters, which is an ongoing process. Cleaned out the dechlorination tank and we also cleaned out the clarifiers.
Questions for Scott regarding sewer? So what, what were these bids? I don't know why we said we'd open the bids up at this meeting, is that what you said?
Whatever was in the notice that was put out in the newspaper.
I think it said we'll open them up at the board meeting, which is, of course I've never done that. Can we join at the end of the meeting, if you'd like?
As long as I'm not here till ten o'clock.
I will be here, so.
Okay, good.
I mean, there's only three.
I'm sorry?
There's only three, right?
There's only three, yeah, but I don't want to get into, looking at the details of it, whatever.
Probably would.
If you want to stick around for that, they're welcome to. Alright, then let's move on to the treasurer's report.
The timeline.
Anything that's an issue here? Let's just look through the bank balances. As you already heard through the ad voices, we paid the final payment for the tennis court. By the way, Bob, you're working on the backboards, right?
Yeah.
Talk about that?
Yeah. I've gotten a price for them and.
Which is?
Came to, the wood and the paint came to just about a thousand dollars.
Alright, that's about half of what you promised me last night. And just describe what it is you're using for wood?
Uh, we're going to be using half inch, pressure treated, one-sided, one good side. And four bay eight plywood.
And you're going to paint, there's a stain paint.
We're going to paint with a solid, a solid stain paint that can be tinted to any color. Uh, so we'll stick with what we got.
You already bought it, right?
What's that?
You haven't already bought the paint?
No, I haven't bought it yet. I want to make sure the, the color is what everybody. Uh, dark green, stick with that. Somebody wanted black, but. Pink. Uh, so yeah, no, they can tint it any color they want, so we'll just do a forest green or.
Yeah, your shirt would be a good color, I think.
What's that?
Your shirt would be a good color.
There you go.
A mural.
And, and that's, it's basically.
So what's the expectation? You're going to do all the paint work beforehand and the?
I don't know, I think we, we really don't have the room to lay out twelve boards inside, so we'll probably put them up and then drop cloth and paint them on the, on walls. Yeah, it's.
It would seem easier. I like the idea you first suggested you're going to do it out in the garage or?
Well, we just have to.
In front of the garage?
We kind of have to do it piecemeal, but I guess we could figure, if, if you want to do it that way, we could.
Just for the sake of protecting.
Six on, once to six, do six and then next day do another six.
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
I prefer that just for the sake of reducing the risk of getting anything on the, on this tennis court. And also make sure you can cover all, how many sides? You have six sides, including the edges.
Okay.
Alright.
No problem.
Peter, any comment about that?
I got out there the other day on the courts, they look great. I saw Mindy and Carlisle as well and they communicated their, you know, appreciation for working with the village. And I thought it was just a great sort of team effort with the village board and private donors and, and Bob and mobile to just do some really good work for the village.
Alright, good.
Job well done by all sides.
Yeah. Thank you, that's good.
The last bill in those vouchers will zero out that account.
That's what we want. That's great. Alright. Oh, Bob, the, the grinding the sidewalks, can we talk about that?
Yeah, I spoke to a gentleman today and he is setting up a date. I told him we have some concerns as to the day of the week that we do it. He said he can accommodate us. And I'm just waiting for him to give. He calls, call me tomorrow. I told him it needs to be done.
Before?
Before September.
Good.
And he said that shouldn't be a problem.
Oh, good.
It's a big corporation now. It's not just a little guy. They.
But the ten thousand dollars is still good?
Yes.
As a contract price?
Yeah, they bought up every one of them and so they're all over the state, states, I should say.
Alright. Sorry for the diversion, I'm just going to use the diagnosis, it's just motivation to ask the question. Okay, you go on the next chart, the treasurer's updates. It's very significant, the second item there. The annual update document, the AUD, we submit that every year to the New York State Controller's Office. This is the first year on record, he actually submitted his first submission without an extension. So hats off to Karen as well, Sarah, in getting their stuff together and getting the, the AUD submitted. They've already gotten questions back, have done, having done that, that's really a tribute to their, their organization, I would say. So that's a good job there.
And I, and I think a hats off to the head of the departments who made sure that they got all of their bills.
True.
Reinforce that with the vendors and with the providers so that, you know, it wouldn't be like surprises.
The deputy clerk, we got him paid, so that was important.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, we don't know yet what is the, the key thing I always look at is the unrestricted fund balance. So I'm waiting for Karen to do her magic to calculate for us what is the available, what I'll call rainy day fund. Merely in the A fund, which is a key metric I think we need to watch. So as soon as we get that, I'll make sure you all know about that. There's no building department report this month. Sheriff wasn't able to complete it. There were no meetings scheduled by the planning board or the ZBA. And that's it for that. Okay, the next item is the no smoking resolution. So we proposed last month that we institute a village-wide resolution that would ban smoking in village buildings, on village property and in village vehicles. And so I believe this is, Ian, you put this draft together, could you just give us this over here?
Yeah, this is a resolution where the board is adopting a new policy to prohibit any type of smoking on village-owned property. This is village hall, this would apply to parks, the highway garage, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. Within all police vehicles, all public works department vehicles, all fire department vehicles. Would also apply to the firehouse. And we would need a motion in a second.
Alright, so I'll just read the top here. At a meeting of the Village of Milburn Board Trustees on August tenth, Mayor Colby induced a following resolution, twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero, which was seconded by.
I'll second.
Alright, Deputy Mayor Cantino. And as far as the details, Ian, can we, you want to go through all this?
Uh, you can just summarize it.
Alright, so the first whereas is the village believes that tobacco, including vapous, is detrimental. Um, we have an opportunity to create a sustained environment that's smoke-free. We believe that we have a role model to perform for the youth to have a positive effect on their lifestyle. We are concerned because the butts from cigarettes are discarded on village property. Which was the reason why we kicked this, this whole thing off. And so based on that, we determine the prohibition of smoking serves to protect the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of our community. Now therefore be resolved, village board determines any smoking, including but not limited to cigarette-smoking, cigar-smoking, marijuana-smoking and vaping shall be strictly prohibited in or on village-owned properties and vehicles, including but not limited to those listed below. It'll list all of the properties owned by the village, including the wastewater treatment plant and the water plant. Be further resolved, the village board authorized this resolution, making all village-owned properties smoke-free. And such resolutions shall take effect immediately. Moved by Mayor Colby, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cantino. And Nicole, can you go through a roll call for the vote?
Yep. Mayor Colby?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Cantino?
Aye.
Trustee Herzog?
Aye.
Trustee Abregaz is not here. Trustee Doro?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, is there, is there an enforcement mechanism that's built into this or? How are we going to be regulating this?
So certainly as, me being the manager of the employees, that's my prerogative, enforce it that way. As far as residents who are on the property, I don't know, what's the story there? I guess I can have a police go and enforce it.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the board. This is just a policy. It's not a local law. It's your policy to enforce. If you see people violating it, you can.
I guess what I would do is I would ask Officer Witt if I had a problem with residents. I mean, I would tell them myself first, but then I would ask Officer Witt as a follow-on. If I start to, because of being a problem with fire department, which by the way, I don't think it is, I would ask Ted to enforce that. I think that's what I would do.
Alright.
Alright. But I would like to know if there's, if you see issues, violations or whatever, I'd definitely want the cigarette butts off the village hall property.
Agreed.
And Bob, you'll take care of that, that butt container thing.
Yeah, we'll dispose of it.
Ask a question?
Do you want us to, do we need to put signs on the building?
Oh, signs, yes, you're right. Okay.
I mean, we don't have, but we do have salespeople walk in once in a while.
You're right. Um, and I think you also said you'd like to see some signs.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would, you know, those of us that are on the property all the time, so I'm not always down to sell plants. Right, but if I have a sign posted and it, like, today we had the chemical driver come in, you know?
Yeah.
Didn't smoke or anything, but some of them do. If they're posted there, it's known.
So Scott and, and Nicole, could you guys feed to Bob what, how many signs you want or what kind? Bob, you'll be the focal point for the signs?
Yeah.
I'll talk to Matt at the firehouse if they need any. Alright?
But just in that example, just so I understand, a, a driver would have to leave village property to have a break?
Yes, yeah, so, so we have two officers who smoke. And the agreement we have, the understanding is that they will not smoke in their vehicles. If they ever got a smoke, they'll step outside. Which is by the way, what they do with their other jobs.
Yeah.
Is why we do that. And so to that end, officers smoking in vehicles a violation, which I would like to know about. Any other questions or comments? Okay, the next item is this. This is just a first discussion point. I'd like to make some changes to the zoning law of the following ilk. The planning board has asked that we put in the zoning, zoning chapter requirement that if a property owner is going to the planning board, the ZBA, with a request for a modification, whatever, that what requirements to be, that they put a sign on their property stating that there will be public hearing on the following date to review the requested change. This will be in addition to what they already do, which is send out certified letters to the neighbors in the vicinity. Alright? Any questions or concerns with that?
At their own expense, correct?
Yes, that's the part, part they build at the head front for the funding of the change. Alright? The second thing I want to put into the zoning law is that we require a temporary permit for outside dining by restaurants in the village. And that we include in this permit a restriction on how much sidewalk space must be available for pedestrians. This is an issue that recently was brought to me because of one of the restaurants having a, a problem with pedestrian thoroughfare. And so I wanted to codify the restrictions, one, to require a temporary annual permit to be submitted by whatever restaurant is interested in it. And two, some specifications regarding how much space is required on the sidewalks and pedestrians that are free for traffic.
So I actually, I didn't bring my notes, I apologize, but I will share them with all of you afterwards. I've been thinking about this since, since our discussions and I found that Rhinebeck has a pretty substantial, like, section on their website.
Yeah, they do.
And I looked into that and I reached out to the village board member, that's the liaison for that, and I spoke with her today over Zoom about what they'd done. Um, she was very helpful. And I'd be happy, and she sent over their, it's not a temporary use permit, but it's another section of their code that I'd be happy to send to.
I think I've seen that. Is that like three or four pages long?
It's a, yeah, it's a couple pages.
Yeah, it was, it was very detailed.
Very detailed, um, you know, the ADA requirements around width. They also account for SLA requirements, State Liquor Authority, that has certain specifications that I don't think we've ever talked about.
Actually, I think we do require, in order to do outdoor dining, you have to have, you know, permit from the state liquor board, liquor, whatever.
That's correct. It's in the state statute.
Yes.
That.
And that's a requirement.
Yeah.
But it doesn't hurt to, we'll codify that as well.
And, and another thing, this is just one of many examples, so another thing they, they're requiring businesses to do is A, look at their liability insurance policy and also add the village to their, to their policy.
Okay.
Uh, which I, which I think is, is really insightful.
Alright, good.
So I, I will send all the information I have to.
Can you summarize it into what you recommend a warning action would be?
Yeah, I'll send it to Ian too, because I'd like to get counsel's input, obviously as well. But I think they did a really thoughtful job about this and I think it would be helpful to, to look at somebody, another municipality that's done this.
Third thing I'd like to add is, is to remove all no, no parking markings in the village, village streets. Again, for the same reason that we need to, parking is a premium and I think we need to make as much parking available as possible. And I think we put the right requirement in as far as sidewalk dining, we won't get any need for any no parking signs.
And that includes the current painted zones within certain restaurants?
That's right.
Removing those?
I'd like to remove those. Okay. And codify it. And the last thing I'd like to do is I'd like to remove that sign code exemption that's in the sign plate. It's kind of like, it sticks all the sore thumb out there to the view.
Regarding government buildings or?
Yeah, yeah.
Remove all exemptions or just?
No, we've got that statement about the exemptions for government buildings.
Just, just for government sites?
Yeah.
Because there are some other exemptions in there.
I'm focused on that one.
Question?
Yes.
When you're saying removing all no parking signs.
Oh, no, oh, no parking markings in the streets.
Alright, in terms of some of the areas you've set up for ten-minute parking.
Leave those alone.
Leave those alone.
I, I recommend we keep those alone.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that that.
I'm specifically talking about no parking.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to.
Alright. Alright, so the board's in agreement with that. I'm looking for any input from Peter on the specifications you've seen from Rhinebeck. And now we'll work with Ian on the other three things I mentioned. Alright. We'll start the long process of updating the zoning chapter.
Okay. Do you, do you want to do all of these at the same time or?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
You know, you see all the zoning, all the zoning, really talking about potentially changing zoning on particular streets.
Oh, no, 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 okay. I don't want to open Pandora's box.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
These four things.
They do have to open doors.
That must be these four things. I'm going to get in and get out as quick as possible.
Okay, alright, just wanted to make sure.
I'm sure someone's going to say, but what about parking? And then I'll be, it'll be done.
Just a question, question about the, excuse me, the sign from ZBA and.
Yes.
Planning board, public hearings. Do you know the specifications you want for the sign?
No, I'm going to look to them to, to give us the. No, I'm gonna look to them to, to give those to us.
For the ZBA and the planning board, okay.
Actually, I think Sarah has an example that she's shown to, um, Matt Henderson, head of the planning board.
Yeah, there are other municipalities that do that.
Yeah, it's a, um, reusable sign, um, but I really want them to make the call.
Okay.
All right, so we'll look for that.
And you wanna introduce all of these at the September meeting?
Let's see how hard it is to pull it all together. If we can do it in September, that'd be great, if not, we'll defer until we're ready. All right, that's a good target, but, um, before that, I want to bring into the September meeting a resolution that summarizes the agreement we made last month regarding sewer hookup for non-village residents, all right? We specified the conditions where that applied, we specified what the fee structure would be. And I've given that to Ian, who's giving me a first pass, is not ready for your review tonight, we'll shoot for that. By, by the way, as soon as I get it ready, I'll send an Altios draft to look at, for me, but my goal would be to have that on to Jennifer next month. All right? Okay, let's, uh, move on. Board member updates, Deputy Mayor.
Tim?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just, I mentioned to you having one of these.
Yes.
Does, does the board need me for any?
I'm sure you won't say you walk out the door, but no, you're good. Thanks for, thanks for sticking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just have three quick things.
Okay.
The vehicle and traffic code modernization, I've been working on with Officer Witt and Trustee Abregast. Uh, we've compiled all our remarks and proposed changes, and are doing the final review, and I hope to get something for the board to look at.
Okay, good. You are gonna codify the, the ten-minute parking schedule. You gonna put that in there?
That's.
Yeah, okay, fine, okay, good.
Um, electric vehicle chargers, as I reported last, not last month, because I wasn't here, but the month before. The town has approved that, uh, a proposal, which at no cost to taxpayers, will put the charges on town property at town hall. Um, they are now reviewing the contract with the manufacturer installer, and, uh, it's a five-year contract. Again, no cost to the taxpayers, and once that done, that's done, um, we can push forward the solution as soon as possible. Uh, Bob's not here, but I wanted to give him props for, um, his suggestions. Tim and I were at a site visit last month to, um, see what best place to place the charges are on the property, and I think Bob was very helpful.
Yeah, I agree. So did they do it, did the, uh, company, whatever it is that installs these, do a site visit?
No, they're not, they're waiting for the proposal of the contract.
Oh, okay, fine.
Yeah, which, I mean, you saw the contract, but it had the village in it, so.
Oh, I see, okay, fine.
That's a primary change unless the boards, um, the town boards cancel.
All right, you wanna talk about we're, we're proposing to put these sites, try to site?
Well, there's now a whole other considerations that he said.
Oh, since we visit, okay, fine.
Yeah, where they put the snow and the salt, but it'll be just as visible.
So it's gonna be on the town board property, on the town hall property?
What, somewhere. But visible and safe, those are the two considerations. Um, and finally, we've been, uh, working at getting this COVID grant submitted. Um, I have to say the latest delay is a good one, because, uh, we've discovered that there are a number of other expenses that we can submit. So in our last meeting with New York State, um, Department of Homeland Security and FEMA, uh, we went through, uh, that, those, uh, proposed expenses, and we are putting together documentation to add to the application, and I hope, if we can split that.
Good, and what's the toll of the submission, of requesting reimbursement from FEMA?
Um, I think it's gonna be around fifteen or sixteen thousand.
Good. This is part of a program where FEMA was reimbursing the municipalities that incurred COVID-related costs, right?
Yes.
So that's what we wanna, okay, good.
Yeah, how much did you say it was, Ricky, approximately?
Fifteen, sixteen thousand.
Any questions for Ricky? Okay, Trustee Herzog.
Okay, I have a couple of quick things, uh, basically, the, uh, homey activities since the twenty-seventh of last month was I attended a local champion Zoom meeting, uh, August ninth, as the liaison for the village, which is Jen Gleason, our local, uh, our local champion for climate smart communities. She was gonna lead our task force and learn about programs that could help the village get certified in climate smart communities at the bronze level eventually, uh, as well as get credit for activities and projects. We're waiting, we need it hopefully. Uh, I will attend a meeting with Jen and Gillian Matthews, who's a representative from Cornell Water Extension, who's going to lead us and give us direction in the next steps to, uh, get on the program and to be able to then proceed in the program itself, so. And it was very, it was excellent Zoom meeting, we had people from, uh, the Cornell Water Extension, as well as from, uh, the agencies, the, the sponsors, local champions, and I think like ten municipalities were involved. So it was a lot of good sharing. And that's, that's pretty much it, except for, uh, I, we, as far as I know, we haven't received anything in the way of a formal award notice concerning our community, community development block grant. But, uh, I did talk to, to, uh, Debra Houston about that, and she said if she wants, if she wants us to be able to put a word in to inquire where they are with that, that she'd be happy to do it. And I told her, uh, at this point, since it looked promising, let's not rock the boat, it'll be a pest.
Yeah, this is the request we put in for a hundred thousand dollar grant to start the sidewalk replacement project. We received notice from the county that it was, um, on the list, and they had to go through a public hearing review of the full set of things that were approved by the, or recommended, I guess, by the county.
Right.
We're waiting for that to get cleared, I guess.
And, and basically, the public hearing time, timeline is done.
Was that right?
Done, done on August fifth, which means that now it's just a matter of get the system public hearing, then they've gotta go through the motions of, you know, making any adjustments in the awards, and then announcing the awards.
Okay.
It's gonna come out of the executive office.
Yep, okay.
Did we testify again? We testified?
Is your what?
Uh, it's, no, it's, it's, it was, in other words, it, it's a, it's a meeting that basically it's, it's open. I mean, we could have testified if there was a need for anyone to testify, but it's, you have the op, the public has the opportunity to see the total package of everybody who's getting the grant and being able to come in and make a comment one way or the other. But I received no information about anything that would endanger our ability to get the award, or testify.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Doro?
Uh, we covered everything that I wanted to, um, mention, especially the Rhinebeck thing, so I will, I will send that information.
That's good, all right, thank you. One thing I wanna ask the board, we have in the bank balances, we have the consolidated trust fund. I don't know if we did this last year, we consolidated through those trusts that we couldn't touch. It's available money to us forty-two thousand dollars, all right? We have a plan to use, um, eighty-five hundred of that for payment to rein, engineering for the, uh, work they did to size up the sidewalk project. I'm still in discussion with them, just to, uh, complete that agreement, I'm not gonna pay the invoice until we actually get that agreement. Basically, that's, that's what you want me to say, eighty-five hundred. So we have remaining in there about thirty-four thousand dollars. My question to the board is, and we don't have an answer now, but I would like to start replacing the windows in the village hall, starting with the lower windows, the ones that are rotted, that are kind of unique in size. And were estimated to cost about thirteen thousand dollars a year ago. What is the one thing about us going back to this contractor, we only found one contractor who actually would supply these windows and ask them to rebuild the, the windows, and if we get a reasonable price, that we use money from this consolidated trust fund account to fund that expense. This would be an out-of-budget expense item.
My only hesitation, because I'm one of the ones who's been pushing for a long time, is that I think would be probably a good idea to find out if there's actually some grant money available for that specific purpose. I think that might be one of the hundred programs.
Oh, really?
That you might be able to get money for, but that's, that's a might, I can't say with any guarantee, and, you know, if.
Like, what kind of programs would it be?
In other words, if you wanted to make, if you, if you wanted to do lighting, the firehouse applies through NYSERDA, we do the lighting in, in the firehouse, and you got money from, through NYSERDA for a grant to do that, and it didn't have to come out of our pocket, basically, it came out of NYSERDA.
I love the idea, but I've been sitting on this for about a year, and been waiting for, you know, the community development block grant, the mid-grant, everyone I get proposed, I think about this, and it doesn't fit. So if you're aware of others that might fit, um, let's talk.
Okay.
Because I'd love to go for grant money, I think we need to start the process of replacing the windows before, you know, it really falls. They're, they're basically rotted at this point.
Well, maybe best to proceed that we're gonna spend the hundred regardless, and, but we know from dealing with grants, thanks to Ricky.
It's a long time, right?
It, uh, A, takes a long time, but B, you don't get it posted after you've spent the money. If you've already spent the money, they're not gonna say, well, that was a good job, there was X amount of bucks they paid, so.
All right, so look, I threw it out there, let's chew on it, um.
It'll save on oil.
I'm sorry?
It'll save on oil.
Sure, yeah.
Oh, there's a lot of benefits that we need it.
On that window.
Windows, all the windows.
All the windows. You should check into hurricane-proof windows. I know it sounds absurd for here, but they're triple pane.
Mm-hmm.
You get much better heat and air conditioning efficiency out of them, and they're also vandal-proof.
Oh, really?
You could take a sledgehammer and hit that window a hundred times and not break through it. So I mean, I'm just throwing that out, because I did my house in Florida. It cut my electrical bill for the heat, well, I don't, I have a heat pump, the air conditioning heat pump, cut my total electric bill in half.
All right, I mean, we can ask that, I'm afraid.
I know it's gonna be more of an out-front cost.
Yeah.
But long-term, you're gonna be in that building for years and years. Not only is it gonna help you with energy efficiency, but security.
I wanna replace those windows, upstairs windows, we'll talk about finishing the surface siding.
Upstairs windows, yeah, but I mean, upstairs.
Those are pretty much standard.
But the, the ones downstairs, if you wanted to make it more secure for everybody that's in there, you go with them.
All right.
I'll, I'll tell you.
I'll add it for listening to be looked at, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next board meeting is the fourteenth of September. Can I get a, let's see, do we need to have the meetings still in session to do the opening of the vision from the outside?
Well, yeah.
I'd say no.
Not my meeting.
No, so, uh, I got a motion for adjourned?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. All right, so Scott, let's do this opening, as it is. Nicole over here?
Sure.
Nicole, we're done, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember who, who, what, do I need, you need to record these?
No.